Blessing on Ashland, Kentucky. And we once again ask for your divine wisdom and guidance on this board of mayor and commissioners. Bless our city manager, our staff and employees, and those in attendance today, we pray. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Let us stand and salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna start with our commissioners, although can everybody hear me?
No, are you on at all?
Some reason.
Mine's on.
Mine doesn't seem to be either. I don't think this one's on, no.
Susan's not here, thanks.
And pretty soon you'll be able to hear us breathe.
Check yours now.
I hear a little bit as well.
Can you hear? Okay.
Can you hear me?
No.
Give us a G note.
This is where you're supposed to have a roadie come out and go, "Testing, testing, want to?"
You can hear now? Better?
Test.
This side of the dais is not.
Test, test, test.
Jim and I are. I'll sit back here. Oh, for real.
Jimmy, you made a lot of your microphone bags here.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot. Do you wanna try me, Steve?
Yours will pick me up, so I don't know.
Alright, we'll just do this.
Yeah.
Squeaked my glass.
You sound, I can hear you. There we go, there we go.
Test, 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 test. You can barely hear me.
Now Marty's.
Test, test, test. Test, test, test.
Use your puppet voice.
Oh, you're on.
Now try it.
Test, test, can you hear me? Okay, I'm good.
We may have to start out with an ordinance, not allowing anybody to touch the microphone system.
That's good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think we're all good now.
Test, test.
I think I'm off now.
No, you're on, you're on.
Okay, good.
Okay. All right. We apologized to anybody watching online and could hear that repeated tapping sound for five minutes, but we'll go ahead and start with commissioner, or excuse me, a motion to receive and file the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a motion to receive and file the minutes for the regular meeting held on June 22nd, 2023, and the recess meeting held on June 23rd, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we'll get to our commissioners' reports. Start with Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, sir. Thank everyone for coming today, welcome. Um, I don't have a whole lot, Brandy's not here, so I'll, I'll take her thunder a little bit, just so, and you guys are a little, you are aware of this, but to make the public aware, um, you know, we have, we are hosting the Appalachian Regional Commission Annual Conference in Ashland, September 11th and 12th. That conference registration went live last Tuesday. It completely sold out within 30 hours. There are over 200 people on the waiting list to get into that conference, so the, the conference people are trying to figure a way to get, to get in everyone who wants to be there. So that's pretty good. And obviously something the governor's office or ARC were not expecting to sell out in 30 hours. So congratulations to everybody involved in that, that's some, some pretty good news there. Uh, I think that's all I have for now, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Bland.
Well, thanks everybody for being here today. Just wanna take a minute to say thanks to Chief Kelly, city manager, and our officers who responded yesterday to an incident, and it was really a good example of procedure and, and our PIO, Erica. Thank you for everyone being aligned and getting the, the right messaging out, it was very important. So thank you all very much for that. Just wanted to say, Mike Wertz, Mike Gracie, did a fantastic job at our, at Summer Motion, the 4th of July event. You're both very inspiring and appreciated that, my in-laws were in town and you helped me out, they really enjoyed that, so thank you. Last but not least, just wanna say, congratulate Mr. Henry Colvey House, he's moving on from us and to, to another, another position, just wanna say congratulate, I didn't tell him before this, but you've done me that way a few times and. Just wanted to get you one, one time before you got out the door. But no, appreciate you and, and, you know, I think a good journalist isn't really doing that great of a job if they don't make everybody mad every now and then, and it's, but it's, it's been a pleasure knowing you and wish you the best of luck in your new position, thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, Commissioner Spriggs.
Yeah, you know, we only meet one time in July, so it's good to see everybody. It was kinda weird not meeting more than once, but anyway, it's good to see everybody here. I just have a couple of things. We went to the farmer's market in the park, if you haven't been there, wow, I had some great corn and beans and all fresh stuff, great, and there's shade over there. So, make a visit there to those farmers, the produce is wonderful. August 4th will be first Friday, correct Commissioner Clark? And I also wanted to say this, I've said this before, we're gonna say it again, you know, we sit up here and pass ordinances to get things done and pay for things, but until you see it all together at the Capitol Projects Committee, you understand the scope and the immense amount of projects that we're doing. It's quite wonderful to see them all in one place, it's quite different than when you pass them and then, you know, you just get a report on it, but good job to the employees in this city for everything that, that they're doing, I mean, it's just amazing the progress we're making. And that's all I have.
All right, Commissioner.
Hey, just wanna welcome everybody, we, seems like forever since we've met, but we had a lot going on and we had a wonderful summer motion, a wonderful market on the square, and I've attended the farmer's market over there, it's actually today from.
Today.
From 2:00 to 6:00.
Yep.
And so I want to make mention, today is Winter Wonderland of Lights, is that, is that kickoff at the Transportation Center. I feel like I'm going into Hobby Lobby when I go down there, because, you know, here we are kicking off Christmas, you know, today, and then we, I just wanna make mention that we attended the 8th playground opening at Wendell Banks Park, and it's an all-inclusive playground. I wanna say thanks to Sean Murray and Amber for their hard work and all our park employees, and it was a great day, that park also has a dog washing station now. I don't have to take my dog to the mall now, to Earthwise, and shower him down, so it's all, it's in front of the dog park, and we wanted to, we dedicated that today in memory of Mary Banks, who, late Commissioner Wendell Banks, that the park's named after, we, we dedicated it in her memory because she passed away recently. Football Friday night will start August the 5th at Putnam Stadium with the first scrimmage, and so it's been very, very hot, stay hydrated, I'm glad the mics are working, 'cause I didn't wanna, here's my coaching voice, get up Johnny, you're killing the grass, you know, but. Thank you, welcome.
Moving along.
And I appreciate you mentioning the heat, you know, our, a lot of our city employees spend a lot of time outside, the work is hard and, and the days are long, especially during the summer, and so we just wanna make sure you are doing all you can to stay hydrated and not, and get overwhelmed. We, we value you as people, human beings first, before employees, and we don't want you to go home sick or worse, so we ask that you take every precaution that you can when you're out there, 'cause I know it's, it's tough. I do want to recognize some of those hardworking people, but we're gonna do that in just a minute after city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you put up the, we got this and we'll go, we'll go with this first. Mark, could you come up to the podium, please, Mr. Hall? Mr. Hall's gonna do an introduction of the utility employees, and those of you who've been at the meetings before, I think we do a really good job of doing promotions for the Ashland Fire Department, the Ashland Police Department, but we've got a roomful of employees here who have taken each of themselves to the next step, trying to improve themselves professionally and personally by gaining different certifications, it makes them better for the city and it makes the city better, and for, for those of you who are here, maybe you're uncomfortable with this, I understand that, but I think it's really important, and, and the board of commissioners think it's really important to recognize your excellence and your continued effort to try to, to be the best you can be in your job, so with that, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you. I'm gonna read through this list, and there's a few that are not in attendance, but I'll just have them stand up.
Actually, when you call the name, please come up, because we wanna get a photo afterwards, so just come on up and start right over here.
Back here.
The back here is great.
Okay. All right, we'll start with wastewater collection. Matthew Miller just received a Class 1 license, come on up, Matt. And Nora Sawyers, Class 1 wastewater collection, come on back here.
Yeah, up here.
Yeah, yeah, there's more room.
And moving into water distribution, actually, in meter services, it's Tyler Martin, received a Class 2 water distribution. Jesse Lee is Class 3 water distribution. Dylan Cross, Class 3 water distribution. Dale White, Class 4 water distribution. And also Edward Riordan received a Class 4 water distribution, he's not, he's not present today. And then also in water distribution is Chris Lambert, who just got his Class 4 license too. Moving on to the wastewater treatment plant, we have Forrest Moore, Class 4 wastewater treatment. Matt Matney, Class 3 wastewater treatment, who's not present today. Claude Wright, Class 3 wastewater treatment. One wastewater treatment. And then from the water treatment plant, we have Dylan Coburn, Class 3 water treatment. Jeremy Coleman, Class 3 water treatment, who's absent. Austin Brenniger, Class 2 water treatment, absent. Kelsey Queen, Class 2 water treatment. Austin Barker, Class 2 water treatment, who's absent. And Bill Stevens, Class 3 water treatment. Erica will probably make you guys squeeze together.
Is the water still on?
These folks represent the best of our, our utility departments, because they're committed to bettering themselves, and we are so proud of the hard work that you're all doing every day to keep our, our utilities running and our water safe, and so on behalf of a grateful commission, we thank you all, thank you.
Here, here, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Hey, Dale, you were certified long before you.
Yeah. Hey, is the water on? I saw you here.
I've also said this in this meeting before, mayor and commissioners, but I know there's a lot of communities that don't encourage that, they don't recognize that with pay increases, and I think that's to the detriment of those communities, if, it just makes us better and I'm proud that you all support pay increases when they, when they hit those different levels and then their upward mobility, so thank you from, I think from both Mark and I, for supporting that. Next, please. Just wanna show, there's been some observations about why we're doing the cleaning of the curb areas and the right-of-way along 13th Street, and I think this picture that Jack and his folks provide shows a pretty clear picture, that's nearly impossible, impassable, the before that you see on the two left-handed pictures and then the one after, that effort's ongoing, and how much more do you have to go on that? Okay, so you'll continue to see these efforts, and I would just ask the community, please be safe when they're out there, 'cause it's, it can be dangerous if they're driving too fast by there. Next, please. Okay, and then there's one other thing I'd like to show, a different presentation, and APD, or excuse me, the Ashland Fire Department recently redid their common areas, the kitchen and the common areas, the city paid for the equipment and the goods, go ahead, but the, the firefighters, firemen did all the work on this, so here is a couple hallway before pictures, the kitchen before picture, in the middle of construction.
Wow.
Still in the middle.
Gee.
And then we'll wrap it up here with the, the end product, and they, again, this is work that all these men and women did. So if you haven't had a chance, that's our oldest station, Station 2, and again, I think it's another good example of an old facility, much like we've discussed in here before, where our, our employees are taking really good care of those items, so thank you, Steve, for your leadership and for all the hard work that has gone into that. The only other thing I'd like to cover today is, well, one thing, I believe there's Broadway nights tomorrow night too, is that correct?
I think so.
If, if that wasn't announced, and then finally, I know it's a very sensitive subject, on the 13th Street with the paving that was redone by state, that big dip in the road on that square box is actually a wind stream cable access box, they are continuing, they're working with an engineering firm to do the, to come up with a design to raise that lid, so it's not off their radar, it's not done, we're gonna, we're working together to get that fixed, fabricate, the word I was trying to think of, so they're trying to fabricate a device that will raise that, and then it'll be in much better shape.
Thank the Lord.
Good, I know.
Thank the Lord.
Combined with the manhole there, it was unavoidable.
Yeah.
So, and thanks to utilities, we're, we're now in the habit of getting those raised up, we're cognizant of that and making that part of the paving routine, so thank you. Okay, Mayor, Commissioner, that's all I have.
All right, with that, we'll move on to public participation, anyone with a comment or request may come to the podium and address the commission concerning matters related to city business, services, or personnel. Comments related to election issues or concerning personal disputes will not be allowed, personal attacks, threatening language will not be tolerated, presentations are limited to five minutes, only one speaker is permitted per subject, no action will be taken at this meeting, those with comments or ask to fill out an inquiry form, leave it with the city clerk for distribution to the proper city department. Would anybody like to come forward at this time?
Okay. At the state convention back in June, we were in Erling, Kentucky. I'm proud to say I've been appointed as State Chaplain for land beds.
Awesome.
I have to give up one job to take this other, so I just thought I'd let you guys know that.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll watch Marty how to pray. That's the thing, right, and if you've seen him at Summer Motion, I got onstage and done the pledge, and he was going, "Go Mike, go!" Alright, thank you all.
Thanks, Mike. Would anybody else like to come forward at this time? Hearing none, old business?
Old business, item A, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the merit of executing contract between the city of Ashland and the Briden Company, Inc. for the box gutter purchase and installation project at the Ashland Transportation Center in the amount of $77,300 for the Department of Finance, Division of Mass Transportation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Item B, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the merit of executing contract between the city of Ashland and the Ashland Boyd County Health Department to provide and administer hepatitis B vaccines to approximately five new employees that are costing $249 per employee for the Department of Human Resources.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Item C, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky prohibiting parking on the north and south sides of the 1200 block of Bath Avenue from its intersection with Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard to 13th Street, and providing a penalty for the violation of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, a resolution of the city of Ashland, Kentucky adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the board of city commissioners of July 27, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
I'll give you all just a moment to review the five-page or three-page consent agenda.
Just paying a lot of people.
And again, keep in mind that this commission does get a draft on Friday, so we are able to review and get better informed about what we're being asked to do here today, so we don't just decide all this on the fly.
That's right.
Well, and also, looking, a lot of this is discussed in our Capitol projects.
That's right, yeah.
So, a lot of very important things happening.
Lot of, lot of utility projects, for sure. Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
New business?
Item A, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the merit of executing amendment to the agreement authorized by ordinance number 138, series of 2018, between the city of Ashland and GRW Engineers, Inc., increasing the agreement in the amount of $78,972 for a contract to provide engineering services for the water treatment plant SCADA project for the Department of Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Item B, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and approving change order number seven, final between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Orders Construction Company, Inc., increasing the contract amount by $76,647.23 for a contract for the construction of the Ashland Water Treatment Plant Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System, SCADA, for the Department of Engineering.
So moved.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Item C, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the merit of executing a contract between the city of Ashland and A+ Contractors LLC for the replacement and reconfiguration of emergency generators for 10 water pump station locations in the amount of $650,000 for the Department of Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, city manager, can you just elaborate for the public's consumption exactly how important this is?
Well, thank you, Mayor. A couple of years ago, you all remember during the ice storm that we had, a lot of limbing on trees had not been done throughout the county, and many, many people lost electric power to include our pump stations for water, and we did not have backup power generation. We had, in the past, had generators that were shuttled out to those locations, some of them were crossed over because we never had faced anything at that level at one time. Mr. Cole, I think it was, did we lose nine pump stations at once, does that sound right?
That sounds right. Yes.
And so, as dramatic, yeah, I guess I should ask, so this has been an effort, and I believe this is with ARPA funds, correct? Yes.
Correct.
So, as you'll see there, you have the, the number of the different pump stations that will now have these locked and loaded and ready to go, and those events, we'll test those periodically, but it's a great use of ARPA funds, and it's something that the community, it really brought home when we had that ice storm.
Yeah.
And I think what worked in the past was fine, we just never had anything at that, that level that impacted that many stations.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Item D, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the merit of executing amendment number one to the agreement between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and HDR Engineering, Inc. for engineering services for design of the 13th Street tank rehabilitation project, increasing the contract amount $189,250 for the Department of Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Item E, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the merit of executing contract between the city of Ashland and CJ Hughes Construction Company, Inc. for the Pollard Mills Infrastructure Project Phase 3 in the amount of $489,724.50 for the Department of Engineering.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Item F, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the merit of executing technical assistance of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute a technical assistance agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and the Nail Rod Company in the amount of $1,999 plus hourly charges for agency requested changes for technical assistance in the preparation of the Housing Choice Voucher, Section 8 Administrative Plan for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Item G, an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute a merchant application and agreement with Card Connect LLC for the credit card payment services for parking kiosks for the City of Ashland.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? City Manager?
Just that the, this will allow us to take payments on the forthcoming kiosks that are going to be located downtown. We've got a target date of having the garage kiosks available and operational on the 1st of October, it will be after the ARC, because we don't want to learn during that conference. So, and then probably in the spring, or depending on, we get bids back this week on the downtown Winchester redevelopment project, and we'll then plan forward on when we'll put the remaining kiosks in.
All right, thank you.
And thank, Michelle was intimately involved with this process and effort to, with T2 and the Credit Card Company in an effort to save us funds on this, so asked a lot of hard questions that I think made them, made them think a little bit harder.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Boyd County Council on Aging, Inc., DBA Ashland Senior Center, the sub-recipient of $15,000 from the 2023 Program Year Community Development Block Grant.
Some move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item I, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Hillcrest Bruce Mission, the sub-recipient of $15,000 from the 2023 Program Year Community Development Block Grant.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item J, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Shelter of Hope, Inc., the sub-recipient of $5,000 from the 2023 Program Year Community Development Block Grant.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Just want to mention Shelter of Hope is one of those organizations, as well as some of the others listed in this agenda today, that are focused on helping those in the most need, and this is one way our government can support those agencies in their efforts to combat addiction, homelessness, and other issues. And we appreciate all the work that they're doing. All in favor?
Aye.
Item K, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Salvation Army of Ashland, the sub-recipient of $5,000 from the Program Year 2023 Community Development Block Grant.
Some move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item L, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Ashland Community Kitchen, Inc., the sub-recipient of $15,000 from the 2023 Program Year Community Development Block Grant.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item M, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Nater Corporation for the purchase and installation of pool lining at Dawson Pool in the amount of $147,596 for the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? City Manager?
Just that, per conversation with Mr. Murray, I'm forgetting last names today for some reason. That's going to be installed after the pool season closes, so again, they can work through that, and then it'll be ready to go to open in the spring.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, that was going to be my question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item N, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute order document number one, screening services between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and MRI Real Estate Software Resident Check LLC to perform assisted housing background checks in the amount of $10 per applicant for the Housing Choice Voucher Program in Section 8 in the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Item O, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky amending Part 6 Benefits, Section C, Vacation Annual League, Policies and Procedures, Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended.
Some move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item P, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky prohibiting the distribution of handbills, circulars, written and printed papers, in the City of Ashland, Kentucky, providing a penalty for violation of this ordinance and repealing the ordinance known and referred to as the bill posting ordinance in Minute Book 13, page 373, adopted on June 7, 1920, referenced in the 1939 Revised Ordinance Sections 1363, 1364, and 1365, and repealing the ordinance prohibiting the distribution of handbills or circulars for advertising purposes in Minute Book 21, page 561, and Minute Book 22, page 507, adopted on December 6, 1932, referenced in the 1939 Revised Ordinance Sections 1445, 1446, and 1447.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Appreciate your work.
Yeah.
Counselor, and all of the, that you just read there, but also your work on that.
Well, hopefully this brings us as far as the constitutional limits on First Amendment speech will allow us to go in regulating just the mass distribution of circulars and handbills and so on without incentive and dumping them on streets at all.
You have to blow the dust off the ordinance for 1920 to review?
Fortunately, Susan, I wrote the new ordinance, Susan figured out all the things that had to be repeated.
Well, much thanks to everyone. All in favor?
Aye.
Item Q, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and approving change order number one between the City of Ashland, Kentucky Department of Engineering and Tribute Contracting and Consultants LLC for the contract regarding the water line replacement project, Phase 2B, US 23, modifying general conditions, Article 7, which will result in decreasing the amount of the contract due to exempted state sales tax.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item R, reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled, a municipal order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting the City of Ashland Title VI Policy Civil Rights and Insurance for the Ashland Fire Department.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I have one additional item that didn't make it to the agenda on new business, and that is a municipal order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing Cheryl Spriggs, Commissioner, to execute and submit a T-Mobile Hometown Grant Application. This would authorize Commissioner Spriggs to apply for a grant that could possibly fund up to $15,000 to be used in the construction of the World War I memorial.
Fifty.
Fifty. I'm sorry?
Fifty. I thought I said.
Fifty.
You said fifteen.
Oh.
That's all right.
Well, we heard fifteen, maybe.
I may have mumbled, anyway, yeah, it is up to fifty thousand.
Potato, potato.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right. And then do we have a motion to adjourn?
Could I ask one thing? I forgot to ask a question back on the, on N, with the $10 applicant for out-of-state background checks, do we have an idea how much money that you have to work with, with that? Do we get a lot of these?
Well, basically, every, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Polo.
Mr. P.
Chris. But essentially, every housing person has to go through that, every applicant, it normally costs us $25, and through this group, then it'll just be $10. Is that accurate? So it's a cost savings.
Okay, I'm just.
Sorry, along those lines, is that, do other communities do that also with their programs? Does it stand? Okay.
Yes, Captain Ted provided, this is an analysis requirement.
Okay.
So it's in-state and out-of-state applicants, right?
All out.
All, and so you have a pot of money to?
Full of par for the benefit.
Okay.
Which are reimbursed usually by, or significant amount is reimbursed by.
Just curious, thank you.
All right. Any other new business? All right, we will entertain a motion to adjourn or recess?
Recession until tomorrow morning at 9:00.
There's that second meeting in July.
Yeah.
So close. So close.
So, all right, so we, do we have a motion for that?
Some move.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are recessed till tomorrow.